Blessed be thou God, we truly give God praise and thanks this evening to be gathered once again, and a pleasant good evening to my brothers and sisters in Christ. It is so good to be in the presence of God as we assemble even on this platform. We know that God truly is so amazing and wonderful that he is not limited to time, space, place, anything, location or anything. But he's here, there and everywhere. And we are truly blessed this evening to be in his presence again and truly, truly, we just, as God's people, just desire that he just reign on us and that we remain in his presence. Because it's love divine, joy unspeakable, and it's only if you are in Christ, you will know that. That's why David said, taste and see that the Lord is good. Blessed is the man that trusts in him. So this evening, we just bless God for another opportunity that we can gather to study his word. Because we know that God's word is alive. We know that God's word is life, health, peace, joy, comfort, everything that we need, we can find it in God's word. Because in the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. So we truly thank God that whenever we can sit and study his words, so that we can truly be able to show ourselves approved unto God as workmen that needed not be ashamed, but rightly dividing the word of truth. So this evening, let us pray as we are about to begin. Heavenly Father, we are truly grateful to you this evening for sparing of our lives to be gathered one time on this platform where we can study your word, where we meet to study your word as brethren in Christ. Father, we pray this evening that as you are accustomed doing and being with us, we just invite your holy presence with us again. Father God, that our meeting this evening, our study this evening will be a blessing to us and to those who will hear it. Father, this evening, we pray for your Holy Spirit's anointing in a mighty way that the spirit of understanding and light and knowledge and wisdom and revelation will be afforded us this evening, that as we study your word, we will truly be the people that you desire us to be. Father, we thank you for all of us this evening who are gathered. We pray that those who will be joining us later on, we pray that you will just bless their hearts too as they come along with us, and those who can't join with us this evening, like Sanadi, Lord, we pray that you will touch her right now while she is not feeling well. But we pray that your mighty, powerful healing hands will be upon her right where she is at this moment. So Father God, we just leave everything that we are about to do this evening, we commit it into your hands, into your gracious keeping. And Father, we pray that as we sit this evening, our hearts will be blessed and we'll be able to be a blessing to others. We give you thanks, we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this dear or daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Praise God. Okay, without any further, do I now hand over to Sister Kershaw to take it up from here?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another afternoon of Bible study. Alright, so today, we're just going to round up at least this part of David. And I know we're taking a little while on David, but we understand that David, his life account is so large that he's gonna take some time. I think this is like a fifth or sixth week going into David, but it is important that we examine him very carefully. Not just to get the quote-unquote drama from his side of his life, but also really to just kind of glean from him, because as we continue to say, David was one of those men that was very influential in the Christian, in the Christian world. He's one of those persons that we generally tend to look up to when we, when we want to get an example of how we should serve God, at least the decent parts, alright? And we're gonna go ahead and look at those parts of David that we all are accustomed to, that we all, you know, really admire. Because we don't want, I mean, obviously, we as who are accustomed looking at David and reading the Bible, we would know the good side of David, and we would know all the exploit that he did on behalf of God and how dedicated he was to God. Right? We know that he was the one who was behind all these Psalms, which is all the worship songs, etc., etc., but for persons who may just stumble across this video, who may be watching on YouTube later, they may not know or be aware. And we want to highlight David from all sides, so that they have a full understanding of who this person is, and so that they could understand that, you know, even though David was as human as any one of us, God was able to use him in a very mighty way. Right? But this week, just to close off at least this section of David's life, we're just gonna look at applications as it pertains to his, yeah, as it pertains to at least this not so nice part of his, his account. And of course, as usual, we encourage everyone to participate because this would have been in the document that we have sent in February, in the February there. And so just make sure to chip in with your points, any observations that you have, etc., etc. This is not a stage on the stage, as you may know, I am much younger than most of you. And I would also like to hear some points that I can learn as well, right? And also, I would receive correction as well if I am wrong about anything. Cool? Wonderful. Alright, so if we looking at the document, right, so we have that section there that started, that is titled, "Application of David's Account in Today's World." Alright, and we're gonna just look at a couple of things. Some of them are kind of obvious, some of them, well, we will have to discuss in detail. So let's go. We have point one that says, obviously adultery is a sin. Alright, and our reference text comes out of Exodus, chapter 20, verses 14 and 17. I'm gonna look fit and read it so that we are all aware of what it is. Right, Exodus 14, Exodus, chapter 20, sorry, this is 14. And literally, it says, "You shall not commit adultery." Now, in the context of the entire chapter, this is the chapter encompassing the Ten Commandments. This is just after the people of Israel had come out of Egypt, and God had done the whole Red Sea, you know, thing, and you defeated the Egyptians by covering them back up and so on. And God was trying to give them a structure by which to live, because you asked them just before, listen, I did this, I delivered you from this bondage, from this, you know, this life that the Egyptians, the strain that the Egyptians had put you under. And here's the deal, we can either do one of two things, and he literally gave them that choice. And I think when we talk about the Israelites, I think we tend to forget that part of their account as well. It wasn't that just God had, you know, saved them, and he, you know, fully expected them to just fall in line, well, as in, well, I savior, you should be grateful to me. God literally gave them a choice. He said, listen, we can do one of two things. You can either let me be your God, I'll take care of you all, I will carry you all to your promised land, etc., and everything will be, you know, in your favor, or you could go choose to go your way. Either way, it's not a problem to me, but decide what it is you all want to do. And with their own mouths, the Israelites ended up saying, yeah, we want to go with you, yeah, you'll be our God, and so on, so forth. And with that was the establishment of the Ten Commandments. It wasn't just dropped on them, it wasn't just, you know, foisted upon them. He asked them a question, they answered in favor of wanting to be under his command, his rule, his leading. And then he tell them, okay, since that is the case, since you are going to be my representatives on earth, because they, they would be the ones who would be the human, but they would be the sign that God existed, and he would be the one doing things for them. So anybody who met up with Israel would more or less be his, would see his representatives, right? And so in consideration of that, he wanted them to live in a certain way and represent him in a certain way. It's the same thing with us, obviously, same thing all the way down. So God gives us a choice, we make the choice. We have certain things that we need to follow, we don't always do them the way that we should. And, you know, God never forces himself upon us, alright? But once we decide to make that choice for him, he is going to hold us accountable. And one of the things that God had asked the Israelites to do was to not commit adultery, which is essentially, do not cheat on your husband or your wife. Essentially, don't sleep outside. Once you have your husband, once you have your wife, one husband, one wife, well, at that time, it wasn't one husband, one wife, it was, you know, it was different, things were different back then, right? But essentially, don't go outside of your marriage, that's what that meant. Jesus extended the definition of what adultery was just after that, and he said, he made it so, he narrowed it down so much, he said, "by just looking at a woman, any woman at all." And I guess, obviously, it would go for men as well, right? But looking at a woman and having lustful thoughts towards her, not as if he could do anything anyway, but even by having these lustful thoughts towards her, that is also adultery. Alright, so Jesus made it so very niche that he, he wanted us, wanted us to keep him in line, right? More or less. Right, so that's verse 14. And then verse 17 says, which backs up what Jesus was trying to explain. "You shall not covet your neighbor's house, you shall not covet your neighbor's wife, nor his male servant, nor his female servant, nor his ox, nor his donkeys, nor anything that is your neighbor's." So it also extends to your items, anything at your neighbor's house, so you see what things that your neighbor has, and you're so, I think, envious, I guess is a good word, and you're envious to the point where you want what they have, to the point where you're thinking about how to, how you could possibly get what your neighbor have. All of that is a part of all adultery slash wanting, and that's not what we are supposed to do as people of God. Alright, once we make that decision to be, you know, living for God, we ought not to think that way, we ought not to act that way. And David, although he would have, well, he would have been under these, these Ten Commandments, 10 plus these 600, whatever, right? So he would have known what they would have God said. He would have known that, you know, you're not supposed to, he wasn't even supposed to be on that balcony for long, alright? He should not have been there, and from the time he realizes what's going, so first of all, he broke rule number, number 10, before he went back to break, to break the one further up. So he actually coveted first before, sorry, before he committed adultery. Alright, so he broke those two commandments there, and that was the one, more or less the one job that he had, and especially him being a king of Israel. And we all know the history of how Israel ended up getting kings in the first place, right? They didn't have a king all the time, they beg God, they beg God, they beg God, God wasn't happy about it, because he was already their leader. And he gave them soul, and going down the line, everybody else. We saw how that ended a disaster for Israel and Judah to a certain extent, alright? But as a king, in those times, the king was seen as representative of whatever God was being worshipped by the nation, right? So for David to do that, and other nations watching and realizing, wait now, is that, is that what a man do? It was embarrassing to God, alright? It was embarrassing to God, and it was embarrassing, it wasn't a good look, it wasn't a good representation of who God was, and obviously, God wasn't happy, and we knew what happened with David thereafter. Alright, so coming back to application in today's world. I am sorry to disappoint those of you who may not agree, but God didn't change, he didn't amend the Ten Commandments. Adultery is still very much a sin. He said what he said, and he meant what he said, the first time, alright? And it is because, generally, because God is committed to us, he wants us to replicate that commitment in relationships. That's, that's the reason why, alright? He doesn't want us being double-minded, all of that. He knows how he feels when we worship other things, make space for other things, replace him with other things. So he doesn't want us replicating that in any form or fashion, and so that he has declared that adultery is a sin. Alright, now it's very straightforward, very basic. That is all there is to that. Right, so I don't suppose anybody has anything to add? Alright, so number two in our applications. So number two says biblical parenting. Biblical parenting may defer to the accepted culture of a society. Parents are expected to set a godly example. And the reference text for that is Deuteronomy 6, 4 to 9. I'm going to read it again. And it says, well, we indeed realize we're in Deuteronomy again, which would, it is essentially the explanation of all the commandments and the detailing, well, Moses detailing the commandments and explaining why things were the way they were to the Israelites, alright? I think this was just before he was going to die or something either. And so it says, "Hear, O Israel, the Lord of God, the Lord is one. You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your strength. And these words which I command you today shall be in your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your children, and shall talk of them when you sit in your house, and when you walk by the way, when you lie down, and when you rise up. You shall bind them as a sign on your hand, and they shall be frontless between your eyes. You shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates." So Moses was trying to reemphasize that the laws that were given to the Israelites at that time, and, you know, they had this day, particular day, everywhere they were supposed to go back and read all the laws, or reading the hearing of everybody, all laws, so they would be accustomed, but in addition to that, the responsibility of the parent was that they would, by, not just by living, but by talking about it and discussing and explaining why the laws were there, was so that their children could hear and understand and practice. Alright, and there's a lot in there to talk about, because number one, the, we had this part of the, of the Israelites' way of life, where they were expected to come into like a large setting, right, together as a group, and they were expected to listen to the laws, all them laws, all them long, long laws. It could have been ten, but we all know what happened there. And they were to listen to the laws and to be aware of what all of them said, along with all the ramifications and everything. And the purpose of that was to reemphasize essentially what, what was being taught, so everybody would be on the same page as far as that went. For me, that kind of replicates the school setting, right? Formal education. Right, for children and stuff like that, it's usually children, sometimes it's adults, depending on what level you're at. Come together so that they can all learn together certain fundamental, fundamental parts of a subject, whatever subject is studied, whether it's math, English, science, whatever, right? So there's a responsibility by teachers to make sure that certain fundamental truths and, and facts are passed down as part of the learning process. But as we see with this part of the instruction in Deuteronomy there, that's not all there is. It's not just up to the teacher to make sure that the child learns. The parents also have a responsibility to ensure that the child learns, and this doesn't just go for biblical concepts. Because we could always just put it on the church and let the church handle, or church in Moscow, whatever faith you're listening, that you are that you're listening to us right now, you could always put it on a religious person, a religious body, to teach the children, to teach the people what they need to know. But it doesn't end there. It also says the parent has a responsibility to ensure that these things are reinforced. Because learning is not, you don't just go one to one lesson and you learn everything, but you shouldn't. Go to one lesson and learn everything all at once. It takes reinforcing, it takes repeating. Sometimes it takes learning the lesson the hard way multiple times. And so this is why Moses commanded that the parents should sit with them, talk to the children, explain why things are the way they are, so that they would be accustomed with it until it would become a part of their life, and not just some lesson in the clothes that they think they're supposed to know or memorize. And they even went as far to say, as to bind them as a sign on your hand, so that you wouldn't forget. Right, so that you would not forget that they're there. That's how far they were to go, but essentially, he meant that it should be so much a part of their lives should be as natural as breathing. And another thing that we have to kind of note there is the fact that in order to teach the children, the parent would have to be, would have to know. And not just know, they would have to understand, because I think where we fall short sometimes is that we teach certain principles about the Bible, and we don't actually understand what they mean. And so when we pass them on, we think, okay, well, I teach them to my child, and they should know them, and they should just know them. And you can't give a reasonable explanation as to why certain things are done. So for instance, like we said with the first point, God knows of how he feels when we replace him with things, or we put things in place of him. And so he puts up a thing against adultery, because he didn't want that happening in any form. We, so, and he, he was able to, to back all that up by putting that law in place. And we have to understand where the laws come from, we have to understand why they are done, we have to understand, be able to, and even if you don't understand everything, I mean, this is a good opportunity to do some self-searching, some Bible study, and understand why things are the way they are, and not just pick them up out of the blue and teach them. Because as I continue, as I always say, this generation and the ones after, well, my generation and the ones after mine, they asking more and more questions every day, they're not just accepting things as they are. They asking questions, and if you don't have the answers that they, that they need or that will satisfy them, they will move on to something else, or they will find another source that will teach them probably what you don't want them to learn. And so that is why it's more important now to be able to not just live a life and know the scripture and, you know, drag them to church. It's important that you're knowledgeable and that you teach them and make this life that we lead as natural as breathing. Alright, I would love to hear a parent's perspective on it, because I am talking as a child, right? But I would love to hear a parent's perspective on it, because this is, this could be really interesting, to just to hear somebody's, a parent's thought on this, and I guess the rest of you all on here are parents, so somebody can pick up for me. Thoughts?
Sister Kershaw, good evening, everybody. I don't know if it is appropriate, I just want to do three little points from David's life, if that is okay? Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Sister Walker, go ahead.
Okay, three little points from David's life. David was not without faults. Even though David was a powerful king over Israel for forty years, and his heart was definitely inclined towards, he was not without faults. For example, David sinned in placing confidence in human strength. We would find that in 2 Samuel, verse 24, chapter 24, verse nine and 10. And he manifested weakness as a father whose son brought him shame. 2 Samuel again, I don't want to read it because it will take up too much time. Chapter 13, verse 21, and chapter 14, verse 28. Yet God used him, thus David's life is a prime example in the scripture of how God works through weaker and frail and sinful persons like you and me to accomplish his purpose. David was not without troubles. One of the basic policies is, which make, which many Christians secretly hold, is the idea that when you are right with God, you ought to have nothing but good fortune. But David had his share of troubles. He brought some of them upon himself because of his sin with Bathsheba and his lack of discipline over his children. But it's also clear that David faced many troubles for which he was not responsible. Adversaries and troubles are not always punishment for evil, which we have done. It's certainly proper for us to examine ourselves and to confess our sins frequently. But when hard places do come, when hard places do come, it will not always be possible to put our fingers on something we have done. We will not always have an immediate explanation as to why we have dealt with so harshly. Many times, God does what he does simply because he is who he is. He is God, and beside him there is none other, and offers no explanation as to, as it, as it was in the case of Job. Third point, David was not without limitations. David needed a power outside himself, and he wasn't too proud to admit it. He said one time, "My soul thirsteth for God, for the living God," Psalm 42, verse 2. On another occasion, he said, "The Lord is the strength of my life; of whom shall I be afraid?" Psalm 27, verse 1. David was a man after God's own heart. He had faults and troubles and limitations. But one of the beautiful things about his life is that he wasn't too proud to hold out his hands for help. But one of the beautiful things about his life is that he wasn't too proud to hold out his hands for help. David is mentioned in the Heroes of Fate, chapter Hebrew eleven. Beginning at verse thirty two, we read, and what shall I more say? For the time would fall me, would fail me to tell of Gideon's and of Barak and of Samson and of. Just, just a fact of David also and Samuel of the prophet. Who told, who through fate subdued kingdoms, wrought righteousness, obtained promises, stopped them out of lions. Quenched the violent, the violent of fire, escaped the edge of the sword, out of weakness were made strong. Wax violent in fight, turn to flight, the armies of the alien, Hebrew eleven. Chapter thirty, Hebrew, chapter eleven, verse thirty two and thirty four. These men of faith were divinely enabled to perform remarkable deeds beyond their own. Natural abilities. If we apply these lessons from the life of David to our life. We would seek to avoid many mistakes which David made. Let us, let each of us resolve the press towards the mark of the high calling, which is in Christ Jesus. Thank you, Sister Kershaw.
Thank you, Sister Walker. Anybody else? Okay, alright, let's, let's move on to point number three, um, cause we don't want to spend too long here. Alright, so point number three, our sinful nature tends to make decisions based on selfishness and self-pleasure. God wants us to be holy, doing the right thing regardless of the situation. And our reference list is taken from Galatians five and reading from verse. Sixteen to verse twenty one. And it says, I say then walk in the spirit and you shall not fulfill the lust of the flesh. For the, for the flesh lusts against the spirit and the spirit against the flesh. And these are contrary to one another so that you do not do the things that you wish. But if you are led by the spirit, you are not under the law. Now the lusts of the flesh are evident, which are adultery, fornication, uncleanness, loodness, idolatry, sorcery. Hatred, contentions, jealousies, odds of wrath, selfish ambitions, dissensions, heresies. Envisements, murders, drunkenness, rivalries, and the like of which I tell you beforehand, just as I also told you in time, time pass. Those who practice such things will not inherit the kingdom of God. So as we know. When God created man, they were ignorant of what sin was. Alright, and then we had the influence of the enemy which led to the fall. And of course, when they. Because essentially Adam and Eve were a blank slate, right? But having eaten of the fruit of the knowledge of. Of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil, they instantly became. Um aware of what good and evil was. And so that they, so. Having done that act and their disobedience. Oh, okay. Alright, having to, you know, endure, haven't, haven't done that and then having that disobedient act there. Not listening to God and, you know, completely ignoring what he said, um, ended up. Having us take on this sinful nature, alright? And so despite having nothing to do with it, we all now have to. To do with the actual act of eating and disobeying God, we now have to all deal with the consequences. Of the act of Adam and Eve, alright? And. This nature within us will always fight against the nature of God and what he wants us to do. God created us also in his own image and likeness and that doesn't help matters. Because God, just as God created us in order to be something that he can relate to. He also embedded in us a spirit of creativity and, you know, wanting to. Be able to do things on our own. Um so surrendering to God is something that you have to actively try to do. Alright, and our nature will always, always, always forever fight against that. It takes real surrendering to God. To be able to combat this nature that we fight with and we will fight with it until we die. That's just the unfortunate part of it. Um David went through the things that he went through because of that same nature. Right? And that's why we wanted to talk about David in this way first so that we could understand. Well, so that we who know David in, in, in the way that we know him would understand. That he was just as much as human as we were, right? He was fighting with flesh like we do. And. He made it based on. This lust that he was fighting up with there, right? Um. But the verse, the reference was in Galatians tells us that. We ought to walk in the spirit and that really requires the help of God. Right? And allowing water really take control of our lives and take control of our entire being. So that we would not do the things that we ought to, I think it was Paul who was saying that, so that we would not do the things that we don't want to do. Right? He was, Paul was complaining at, at some point that, you know, he, the things that he wants to do, he is not able to do them. But things he don't want to do, he end up doing them. It's the same story with all of us, right? But we are called to walk in the spirit or walk after God, essentially that's what that means. It means to live in such a way that pleases God, live according to the tenets of God, as all walking in the spirit means. Alright, and then that same passage in Galatians, they list out the things that are not the spirit. Alright, adultery, well, adultery popping up again, fornication, uncleanness, loodness, all of that stuff. Is that we could easily identify that is not of the spirit. Alright, and not in alignment with what God requires of us. Cause again, we are all representatives of God. Once we make that decision to accept Christ. Into our lives, we are all automatically, all automatically become representatives of God and. We are expected to live in a particular light, in a particular way. Alright, so that we would not embarrass God. Point four, guard your heart, alright, uh, yeah. Yeah, guard your heart. Called a man after God's own heart, David failed to guard his heart and fell prey to his own sinful nature. And the reference was with Samuel thirteen, where we would have read that Samuel thirteen chap, uh, this when we talked about his incident earlier. And we also talked about the fact that we have to guard our, guard our minds. Now, just for a little context, for a little knowledge, when the Bible talks about. Guarding your heart, when it talks about your heart, it all, it talks about not just your actual spirit. Right? It talks about your mind as well. So your heart was made up, I think, of your mind, your spirit. And there's another part of you that the. But when the, when the scripture talks about your heart, it's not just talking about your actual heart in your chest. Alright, it talks about your mind as well and talks about your, your spirit and well, obviously whatever your heart is, right? Um and we are called to make sure or ensure that the things that we receive. Are things that would strengthen us in, in God and. Cause us to live a life that is pleasing unto him. And it's not always easy. There's a lot of noise from. The world outside and a lot of things can infiltrate, sometimes against our own will. Can always control what infiltrates our minds sometimes, alright? But we are expected to as much as possible to. Guard our hearts from the things that would cause us to sin against God, right? That starts with knowing what your weak points are. And um a lot of the time, sometimes in interviews, like interviews for jobs and stuff. The interviewer will ask, you know, what are Samuel weaknesses? And what a lot of recruiters will tell you is that the wrong answer to give is I don't have no weaknesses. Because it shows that you are more than likely not self-aware. Alright, you're not self-aware, you're just, you know, feel like you're doing it well and it also, it shows an incapacity to want to learn. Alright, that at least that's what I said, so you could, I don't, I, I don't think it's any different to your normal life. Um if you say that you have no weaknesses, then it means that you're either A, not self-aware. Or B, you're calling God a liar. I can't remember which one is that. But we are all, we are, have all said, we've all fallen short of the glory of God and we all still have things that we're fighting up with. And also Christian in here, sorry to say. Alright, we are all still struggling and that is the point of this journey anyway. When you are struggling, so if, for instance, if you are dying and you stop struggling. It means that more than likely you have stopped breathing. So. If you're struggling with something and you feel like, you know, you should be at a particular place, it's not always necessarily so. Continue to struggle. Eventually you will get over whatever this is and you will become stronger for it. Right, number five. Be careful with power. Power and money can make people feel that they deserve certain privileges. Reference text is James, chapter four, verses four to ten, and I will leave that one to read for, for you to read in your own time. Because I feel like this is something that you could talk about for a really long time, for sessions upon sessions. But to make this really quick, um. Power corrupts, right? We all know that one. Power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. Alright, there's nothing worse than a person who knows they have. Authority. And knows that they can abuse it and get away with abusing the authority. There's nothing worse than somebody like that because not only do they oppress everybody. Underneath them, they end up destroying everybody underneath them and, and themselves included. Alright, David clearly had ended up with an issue of power, alright? He. Knew that God was consistently. He was consistently just behind him, right? And rather than be grateful to God for. His victories that he had, the small wins that he had. He seemed to take that as, you know, a moment to. Take whatever it is he wanted. Because as we know, David had many concubines and he had wives and stuff like that. And it was nothing for God, even if he felt like, you know, he didn't have enough. In means I'm telling that after, even if you feel like you didn't have enough, God was willing to give you more because of. You know, this person that you were. And he decided that he would take based on who he was, a, a whole king. And we discussed, when we were discussing Bathsheba, how that whole power dynamic was a very terrible thing. He decided that he was going to just abuse it. And again, this was offensive to God because it. He was, David was representing God and God didn't want to, probably didn't want to be seen as a God that was advantageous. Cause he's not an advan, advan, advantageous God, right? He always gives us the choice, he always gives us the chance, he always gives us the leeway to decide whether we want to follow him or not. By David doing what he did, he kinda set a tone there that really wasn't alright with God at all. And of course, yes, he suffered the consequences, alright? Oh, and they also talk about the money, well, the love of money. Alright, the love of money can make, or money or having money can make people feel as if they deserve. Certain privileges. What we have to remember in this instance is that everything that we have, everything that we are afforded, whether it's much or whether it's little. It comes from God and ultimately it belongs to God. So we should never feel. So puffed up, so hoarty, so above everybody else and feel as if, you know, we could swing. Our power or our wealth in some instances around and do things the way we want to do them. As a matter of fact, when we have things, we should become even more humble, knowing that God is showing his favor upon us. When he takes us even higher is the more humble we should get. Alright, we should develop even more of our servants at, um, spirit. The higher we go, it should not be an opportunity for us to want to swing our power around because we can't, alright? Uh, number six, pretending a sin doesn't exist. Will not make it go away. And we see this a lot in our world today. And I feel like everybody thinking the same thing, I think in the same one thing, I think and I feel everybody thinking about it. But pretending a sin does not exist does not mean the sin is not a sin. And we don't get to pretend, we don't get to make up rules with God, right? We don't get to make up our own realities with God. It's the same way. So let's bring it down to normal things. There's a law, particular law in our law books, right here in Trinidad. And despite what you think of the law, right? The law is the law. If you get caught. Breaking that law, the consequences remain the same. I don't know why human beings feel it is any different with God. And that because is us and our feelings are involved and our, you know. Is, is something related to us. And that we are involved, that somehow God should make some kind of concession or some kind of thing. Or going even further than that, because we feel it might be something outdated, quote unquote, outdated. Or they don't feel like this is what God really meant, or they don't feel like this is how God should really be. Um, I don't know why we, we think that God should make any concessions for us. As if we are not the creation here and he is the creator, right? Um, we don't get to pretend and create our own realities because God is a God of yes, no. And well, sometimes in some instances, wait, right? He, when he speaks, he speaks in absolutes, have no. With waffing with him, right? If he says something is something, that is the end of the something and there's nothing that you can do. To change his mind about it. And yes, we all think in the same one thing, but if I start to talk about that now, we're gonna be here. Whole night. So we don't get to make up our own realities. And I know a lot of people, if you are not in Christ, you're gonna be completely disappointed. But um you don't get to make up your own realities with God. And the best way to figure out what God's reality is, and if you want to live in his, his space. Is by reading the word of God and understanding and accepting that that is the way that it is. As uncomfortable as it makes you right now, alright? Let's move on before I start to talk about the thing I want to talk about. Number seven. If you sin, you can confess your sin, change your ways and allow God to use your situation to create good. Which I think is what all of us want to really come back to as of next time. Um, cause even though we talk about David like this, we, we really don't want you to think that David was a monster or that he was, you know, this unworthy person. God most definitely forgave David, even though he allowed him to experience the consequences of his actions. He most certainly forgave David and restored David, right? At least spiritually. He restored David and allowed David to more or less come back, you know, as his child, even though he went through. All the things that he went through, alright? And the same invitation is extended to us. Even though we sin, even though we make mistakes, even though we fall short of the glory of God at times. God is aware of our makeup, he's aware that, you know, the situation we're in is not something that. We would choose for ourselves and he always extends that forgiveness to us, alright? And if he hasn't changed, he hasn't changed, just like he doesn't change his precepts for us, his nature does not change. He still continues to forgive. Oh, reference verse for that one is first John, chapter one, nine to ten. And for the last point, Proverbs eleven fourteen, forgot to mention the verses for those two, right? But it requires. Forgot to mention the verses for those two, right, but it requires that you confess your sins first. Alright, if you. Not willing to apologize, to confess and to apologize to God for your misdoings, I mean, he can't really just, you know. Forgive you, it requires confession with your mouth sometimes. Um, and so if you confess, if you change your ways. Right, so confessing is all well and good and saying that, you know, Lord forgive me is all well and good, but you also have to change. Because it can be that you're asking God for forgiveness and in a way, my heart repeating the same thing and the same thing and the same thing and the same thing without remorse. Knowing and you're committing a sin knowing that God will forgive you, right, that's presumptuous sin, that is a presumptuous sin. Just say, asking for forgiveness to go back and do the thing just because you know that God will forgive you, that was, that would be presumptuous sin, um. It doesn't mean that if you sin and then you fall again without really meaning to. That God doesn't forgive you, those are two different things altogether, line is very thin, but it's two different things altogether. Alright, you have to be willing to change, that's the second thing. And you also have to be willing to allow God to use your situation to create good, so they have to con- you have to make that space. For God to work within your life. And to be examples, to be an example to others, that's all that means. Uh, number eight. The heart can fool any of us and destroy the best of us, Jeremiah seventeen nine. All these I'm leaving for you to read for homework, because we just want to leave space for for somebody to make comments. Um, the heart can fool any of us and destroy the best of us. As we know, the word says that the heart of a man is desperately wicked, who could know it? God knows the our heart, right? We'd love to say that all the time to God, God, you know my heart, yes, he does, and he knows it's not the best all the time. Alright, so it's important um that we not listen to our heart, because another popular thing that is said is. Listen to your heart and it will lead you in the right way, no, we don't get to do that. Listen to the voice of God and he will always lead you any part that he would like you to go to, which ninety-nine percent, a hundred percent of the time. Is the right way, right, don't listen to your heart, sometimes your heart can lead you. In some of the ru- the most terrible places, factly, lead you in the worst, uh, worst place. Than you were in the first, in the first instance, alright, so um do not listen to your heart, your heart often deceives, listen to the word of God. Um, be aware of the battle of our hearts, first Peter. Sorry, be aware of the battle for our hearts, sorry, first Peter five, eight to ten. Yeah, so um, we're doing a lot of hard things here. But, okay, um. So as we know. We have the enemy of entire creation, it's the spirit. He's the entire, the enemy of everything that God stands for, and once God is invested in something. The devil is always right there to try to destroy it, interfere with it. Make it as uncomfortable as possible, destroy it, alright, and that's simply because he has his own grudges against God. What we have to remember is that. The enemy is not happy that we have chosen to follow after God, and he will always make it hard for us. To continue in that particular vein and continuing to lis- continue to listen to God. Um, and so we have to be hyper aware that he will try every and anything to. Make us discouraged, make us, you know, want to give up and all of that. And we have to ask God to give us the strength or to help us to remember that. We are of God and we are his possession. And ask him to give us the strength to continue in spite of. Right, in spite of of everything that the enemy will try to do and he, and when the enemy throws, he throws for the bullseye. And a lot of times, he's getting real close, so we have to be. Aware and guard our hearts, as we mentioned earlier, guard our hearts against whatever the devil tries to draw against us. And lastly, we have to learn how to respond, and this one is taken from Ephesians six. And it goes from verse ten to verse eighteen, and I want to read that one. Right, Ephesians. I wanna read that one, the rest you guys can before we move, but I am going to read that one in particular. Ephesians six from verse ten, says finally, my brethren. Be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole arm of God that he may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the, of the darkness of this world. Against spiritual wickedness in high places. Wherefore take unto you the whole arm of God that he may be able to withstand in the evil day and having done all to stand. Stand therefore having your loins girt about truth and having on the breastplate of righteousness. And your feet shod with the preparation of the gospel of peace, above all taking the shield of faith. Wherewith he shall be able to quench all the fiery dust of the wicked. And take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the spirit, which is the word of God. Praying always with all prayer and supplication in spirit and watching thereunto with all perseverance and supplication for all saints. And this is a familiar passage of scripture to all of us. After this one, I want to read this one in particular, because we just talked about understanding. What the word of God means before being able to explain it to your children. But explain to anybody as a matter of fact. And a lot of times we read this entire part about putting on the whole armor of God. We ain't know nothing about no armor. This was, this was for persons. Who were accustomed to war, who would wouldn't be knowledgeable about what the certain parts mean. And so sometimes we just rattle this off and we don't exactly know what is we talking about. Because a lot of us not able to tell us what the purpose of our breastplate is. A lot of us not able to see, um, what a helmet is for. I mean, you could kind of have an idea, but some of these parts, some of these, you know, parts of the armor are very important. And then on top of that, what we don't do is you re- we don't recognize how heavy this armor was and how fit you needed to be. To be able to wear the armor in the first place, there's a lot, a lot in this scripture that we just, we kind of just. Glance over it and we don't relate, and so this is what I meant earlier when I said. Or we talked about being sitting down with your children and speaking about it and explaining. Because a lot of us just read this and it's just like we read it and we memorize it and it's nothing more than that. This part of Ephesians six is so very heavy and when you started digging to it. We, you could get a lot, but we're talking about learning how to respond, um. This passage of scripture lets us know that the fight that we are fighting. And the fight that David was fighting even way back then, is not something that you can see. Most of the times, a lot of times you could see it operating in people, but oftentimes what you see with your physical eyes is something deeper. Most of the time, it's something deeper, alright, and in order to be prepared to fight against these. Elements, spiritual wickedness in high places, et cetera, et cetera, we ought to put on a spiritual armor. I don't have the time to go into um each one of the pieces of armor, maybe somebody will, will be able to pick this up. But it tells us essentially that we ought to have these things within us, alright? Um, righteousness is something that we need to have, faith is something that we need to have as part of our ammunition. Um, the gospel of peace, the good news of peace, we should always be willing to spread, to be peacemakers wherever we go. It's not that we should want to see drama everywhere, we we shouldn't want to see drama abide or have people fighting around us, we should always be. The ones to try to make peace, um, the helmet of salvation, salvation is saving essentially. Right, be able to help others, um, we saw the spirit which is being able to know the word of God, funnily enough. It's right in there and we're not even aware the sword is, the armor protects you from everything. From all the doubts of the opponent, but the sword is how you fight back. So in order to know, in order to be able to confront the things that are before us, you have to be able to know the word of God. And sometimes I have to say, a lot of us just memorize the Bible verses for the sake of saying you know the Bible verses. And the word is saying that it not going to cut it, because David knew all the laws and all, he knew every one of them. And still, and still, right, so we ought to know how to respond. And the best response is knowing the word of God and also putting what we know and what we understand into practice. That's also the purpose of the Bible study, right, and that's why we encourage you all to make notes and come and talk, because. We want everybody to understand what God is trying to say. And to understand it beyond just the surface level of what we know, that's why we encourage you all to come and to to speak up. To speak up, it's not about know knowing right now, nobody don't know nothing on the first day, right? But eventually, the more you. Read and the more that you contribute, you're gonna learn a lot of stuff, alright? So, um, this is a little quick run through of the applications into these, well, at least with this side of David's account. Um, I'm just gonna leave a little space for anybody who wants to make any comments.
Alright, just a quick share, good afternoon to all on this um Bible Studies platform. And to those of you who may be listening, uh, but not um visible or whatever. Uh, we just greet you all in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And as you say, we come to this um part where we conclude this part of David. Um, just a little, um, one writer was writing about the culmination of um. David's character and he said, all in all, David was a ga- a grand character. He did some things that were very wrong, but for an oriental king, he was a. He was a most remarkable man, he was heart and soul devoted to God and the ways of God. In a world of idolatry. And in a nation that was continually falling away from idolatry, David stood like a rock for God. In every circumstance of life, he went directly to God in prayers, in thanks or in praise. His two great accomplishments were the kingdom and the Psalms. Just to back up on what you said um about sinning and getting away with it. It reads as well, Absalom led a rebellion against his father and was killed in the struggle. David's wife were violated in public as he had secretly violated Uriah's wife, the wife of Uriah. Thus David glorious reign was clouded with unceasing troubles. What a lesson for those who think that they can sin and sin and sin and get away with it. I want a little pay some attention to this word that we. Right now, that is the lesson that we have been doing and God has answered it in this, in this um. Old, in the Old Testament, they use a word in the New Testament, in the um, and and I think it's in the book of. Um, that should be, I'm not sure, and um, a man should not usurp authority. Here what is usurpation? Yet, this was, uh, right, Absalom probably knew. That Solomon was slated to be David's successor as king. Hence, this effort to steal the throne from his father David. Judging by this face given to the account of it. It must have been one of the most troublesome things in David's reign. It involved defection of some of David's advisors and utterly broke his heart. But Absalom was finally killed and David restored to his own, then followed Sheba's rebellion. Listen what you usurpation is, then followed Sheba's rebellion. Absalom attempted re- u- usurpation, probably weakened David whole on the people. So Sheba tried his hand at it, but was soon crushed. So the word to usurp and I'm glad we 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 fell in this. The word to usurp means rebellion or going against taking over, taking over. So we are thankful to God for David's account of how um, for this account of how David, he was a good man. Grand character, they said, grand character, we did some things that were bad and we have. So when we labeling David or when we studying David, we weigh everything. With the information that we have. And that caused David to write those Psalms, and for God to say he's a man after his own heart. He had to be remorseful, and God was always saying that if. You are faithful and just, I will forgive you for your sins. God bless you all and we hope that this would clear up a lot of um, the clouds. That we dealing with, so in the Old Testament, the interpretation to usurp. Is leading rebellions against or advising people wrongly. To take over, to overthrow, God bless.
Yes, thank you, Brother Mike, for that reading, yeah, and um. Think, I think, uh, the best example of usurpation in recent. Well, one that we could all think about was July twenty-seventh, was it? July twenty-seven nineteen ninety.
Ninety, yeah.
Yeah, July twenty-seven nineteen ninety, that was, that is the best example of what you said.
Yes, no, that is correct.
Example, or the closest to us.
Yes, 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 yes.
Think about what that David situation looked like, it was that, it was essentially that. Right, um, people will try to justify it and say, well, the individuals and them had gripe and whatever, there's a way to deal with that. There's a way to deal with that, there's a way to to bring up your complaints. Without having to overturn and disrupt a country, alright? Which is what Absalom ended up doing, and I wish we had more time to talk about Absalom, because Absalom is such a complex guy. More complex than we actually giving him credit for, he really, really is a piece of. He ended up in a, the way he ended up was funny, but. He was a complex guy, and if you, if you take the time to just read about him, you will realize. It wasn't just another side character in David's story, he was different. Alright, but this is not the Absalom show, this is the really talking about for now. Um, anybody else, we have, well, we've gone over the time, but I just wanna leave a little space for anybody else who might want to comment. Okay, so we had, we're having a quiet evening this evening and that's alright, that just probably means you all are reflecting, because. I know usually when I'm quiet, it means that I'm thinking, so I'm just gonna take it as you're thinking about what was said here today. Um, so this wraps up, um. This part of the account of David, like I said, we're taking this long David, because his account is so large and is such a big part of our faith. Well, when I say our faith, he's, he's one of the more influential persons, and I think Paul is the only other person, and if you talk, start to talk about Paul, you'll spend weeks on Paul. Talking weeks, right, um, but we really. Um, but we really don't want persons who are watching this, who are not a part of um the body of Christ suggesting that David was just this terrible, terrible person who did nothing good for God and all he did was cheat on his wives and take other people's wives and et cetera, et cetera. We really want to round off who David was, so um from next session on one, and we'll probably provide some sort of guidance going forward. Um. And we want to give some of you an opportunity to teach this part, since this is something that is a little more familiar to everybody. We will let you know how we're gonna do this, sorry, we're gonna let you know how we're going to do this in due course. But um we're gonna flip it over to you all out there so that we would, you know, be able to hear from somebody else. And so that it, again, it wouldn't be a sage on the stage, because I am by no means a sage, even though, you know, God has been helping, alright? Um, so we will look at the good part, quote unquote, of David, the righteous part of David, and we'll talk about all the wonderful things that he did in due course. But for now, this wraps up um the part that the account, as far as David's um sins will concern, uh against the Sheba will concern, are concerned. Alright, um, again, the takeaway from this is that as wonderful as David was to God and as much as he was a man after God's own heart, he still had to fight up with his sinful nature. And we want us to take away that, you know, not only that God is faithful and just to forgive us and to restore us, but also that we ought to do some work on our end, which starts with guarding our minds and our spirits from things that we call as a sin against God. Really have to actively guard ourselves against those things, right? Cause that's what caused David to end up in this whole nonsense in the first place. He wasn't actively guarding himself, alright? So with that being said, I'm just going to hand over to Sister Marson. Thank you all so much for listening. And we hope that when we come back next time, we'll be able to have a more lively discussion because we'll be in more familiar territory. Alright, so God bless you all and please continue to be safe, Sister Marson.
Thank you very much, Sister Kushel. Kushel, please do not feel that you were just um on the floor this evening and nobody else was saying anything. I think you were very thorough and I think we were really um taking in uh what you were saying. And sometimes we, sometimes if we go to, to respond, sometimes, just sometimes. I'm not saying that um other people wouldn't see anything new, but sometimes, you know, it will just be like a repetition of, of things sometimes. So sometimes we sit quietly and, and we listen. I got bummed off and when I came back, I realized we were just shooting, going down the road because I was about to come in, I was trying to, I would have liked to come in right after um Sister Walcott. Because we were actually dealing with parenting um and, and, and parents teaching our children and so. However, we have passed all of that. I hope that this evening, this evening's session would truly bless the hearts of those who would listen to this program afterwards. Um, and truly, um David is one of the men that I really, really truly love. David, I love David in the Old Testament, I love Paul in the New One. Um, and um we can truly take a lot from David's account, from his life. And um both good and bad, both good and bad. When I'm, when I say so, you know, it's like um David even, when, when we did that part where we realized that we didn't really hear David say anything about his Absalom and um Tima and all of this sort of, sort of, sort of things. But um you know, this, these are comes and the way we are studying it here, it truly brings to life uh our human, our humanity, our human existence. And as you truly and you rightly said, there, there just now. Every child of God, everyone, every single, we could say whatever we want and feel that we are so spiritual. Every one of us struggle with our humanity, keeping yourself holy and sacred, every one of us, every one of us. And um that is why, well, I missed this part, but I know it would have gone and we all would have gone through that. Um, in Galatians five there where, where we have the lust of the flesh, you know? And um we, all of us have to deal with this, all of us have to deal with this. And we are the ones who have to make that conscious choice and stay in line to be under the anointing of the Spirit of God at all times. It's just like that. Um, we cannot, as children of God, let our guard down at any time because it may get us into some problems like David did. Letting your guard down and trying to trust your own heart and thinking that um uh, you know, the arm of flesh will fail you, you're there not trust your own, your own arm doesn't mean your own family or anything, it mean your own self. Can't even trust your own self, because sometimes in situations, you don't even know what you will do. So that should make us really have that heart and that spirit of humility. And also where we would um not be quick to not rush the judgment with other people. Because they are struggling just as we are and sometimes they might be a little weaker. So what we have to do is to just encourage each other so that we would all stay in line, as you said. Um, putting on the armor of God, as, as I said some time ago, it's God's armor, it's not ours. It's God's armor, but we have to put it on. And um that, that one of the songs we sing is, it sing is each piece put on with prayer. That's a song, I'm, I'm not saying that's the word of God, that's a song. Each piece put on with prayer. And we see very outstanding in, in that, in that armor. Two most, two of the most significant pieces there, well, more than two. We have, we have, we have righteousness and, 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 and we have our, our salvation and, and all of that. But very predominant is the word of God, God's word and faith. Without faith, it is impossible to please God, just not possible to please God without faith. And we must have the word, and how do we get faith? By hearing the word of God. So this evening, we just give God thanks and praise, I don't want to continue to, I don't want to go on and on. I know how this can um, how we can go on after we, after, you know, hearing and studying God's word. But may God bless us all this evening, Sister Kushel, thank you. Thank you, thank you so, so, so very much for your um for studying to make this, these presentations. I know you did not just sit one evening and start talking. I know that it took intense um study and research for you to be able to um bring over, bring across what you have been doing for the past, but since last year as a matter of fact. So I just continue to give God thanks for you and that you'll continue to grow in God's uh grace and his word and um we, we would all gain knowledge. And as you see, understanding, that's why proverb still, uh Ecclesiastes, that was um proverb, sorry, yes, get wisdom, but he's saying all you're getting, get understanding. And it is truly vital to be able to understand what we are talking about. What we are reading, it's, we need to understand what the word is saying. So may God bless us this evening as we close this session. And we will pick it up in the next couple of weeks and may God bless us this evening. Father, we thank you for being with us this evening, even as you sat and we listened to the explanation of the account of your servant David. Father, we pray that we will take a good example from his life. Lord, and we will follow all the good parts, the righteous part, the part where his heart was always towards you, where in his life he truly tried to please you. And Lord Jesus, we would also look at his failure and we, you will help us to guard our hearts, to guard our minds and to keep our bodies in subjection to the will of God. So Father, we pray that you will just bless everyone this evening. Bless Sister Kushel and bless, bless all our families as we gather on this platform, the Mike family. Uh, every family this evening that is represented here, we pray for your blessing upon our lives, on our homes and our children. And most of all, you will help us to grow stronger and deeper in your word that we will be able to be a blessing to those with whom we come into contact with on a daily basis. Father, we thank you and we praise you as we leave this platform this evening in Jesus' name. And now may the saving grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the love of God, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with us all now and forevermore, amen. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, it now ever shall be, will without end, amen.